All right, good evening, everybody. City of Clear Lake Shores, City Council, regular meeting November eight, fifteenth, twenty twenty-two at six thirty. Call a meeting order. All council members are present. Item two, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the hundredth place's flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, item number three, reports from council. Councilman Steve Wirtis.
I have nothing to report.
Thank you, Mr. Wirtis. Councilman Rick Fisher.
Parks and Pool had a meeting last night. Unfortunately, I was at work. I was unable to attend that, so I guess Chris will give us an update on that. Just got a request for everybody here in the neighborhood. I'm sure everybody heard about the disaster up in Dallas this past weekend at the air show. We have a number of folks here in our neighborhood that are in the aviation community. Fortunately, nobody here personally was in the accident, but there were a lot of friends of people that were involved with that, so I'd just like to ask everybody, please keep them in your prayers and thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
I have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Lade. Councilman Alex Scanlon.
No report tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. Councilman Randy Cronister.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead and give you props for cooking all those turkeys. The Thanksgiving Day was awesome. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Cronister. All right, a couple of things. Thanks to all our veterans out there. Unfortunately, due to the weather, we weren't able to have the Veterans' Day recognition, so thank you for all your service. Thanks to Pious Southman and Joyce Kennedy for heading up the Thanksgiving dinner for the Civic Club and all the volunteers. Thanks to Alex again for the turkeys and everybody that helped to do that and carve the turkeys. And then I hope to see everybody out at the Christmas tree lighting on Thursday, December first. I know they're making headway on that. And also, please drop off any food donations at City Hall for Galveston County Food Bank. So now I'm gonna go and my mayor's comments and address some things that have been happening. First, I want to talk about we discovered that unfortunately at the last city council meeting, we were given wrong information from our attorneys regarding the public speaking verbiage on the agenda. Back in twenty nineteen, after I saw some other cities with changes and seen it at the T M L and being told there were a new state law, our city attorneys were directed to review and update a couple of years back to what we thought we were supposed to be following. But it was recently discovered that C L S had an ordinance with old verbiage, with the old verbiage. The city attorneys have acknowledged their mistake and in the change and assumed liability and have presented that information to concerned parties. No one ever trying to violate anyone's First Amendment rights. That was never the case or intention, simply trying to stay up with current state laws and following the advice of our legal counsel. This country is so divided by hate, threats, lies, and violence, and it should not be happening here when we cross over the bridge coming on to our slice of paradise. This city, the city cannot conduct business on social media. Therefore, if and when false statements are put out, unless someone seeks the truth, the false narrative is what people tend to believe, and that is unfortunate. There is always more than what that one person is posting. Anytime, any resident can contact the city, myself, or a council member. I know I have always answered any questions that I can for any resident that has contacted me. Anyone that knows me knows my character and my heart. I'm a resident who loves our city and decided to get involved. Am I perfect? No, I am not. But I have tried to learn from my mistakes and treat people with respect. There was never a personal agenda or ill feelings towards anyone that had served before me. My biggest concern was the resident not feeling like we knew much what was going on in our city. I have worked hard with some amazing previous and current council members and staff members to make sure that that changed, and over the past four years, we have done many great things to move the city forward. Every decision I have made has always been with eleven hundred residents and business owners of Clear Lake Shores in mind, not just one. I have been willing to make the hard and unpopular choices when others have not have and was always okay with taking the heat for them, as I know in business, you have to take what the bad with the good, and again. I've never had a personal agenda and just a love for the city and its residents and business owners. The worst thing I've done was to put too much trust into some of our city employees that were hired unanimously by previous councils and apparently our legal counsel, and for that, I will own. I will always stand by allowing the city staff the leeway to do their jobs, and as I do feel it is the position of the mayor council, it's not the position of the mayor council to micromanage manage the city employees. I have endured horrific things being said about me and my family and never one time brought those feelings into a meeting or decision that needed to be made for this city. This is a small community, and we are volunteers, and no one should ever be made to not make, not feel safe in their home and be under the verbal attacks and lies as my family has and previous council members had to endure. We need to work together on things, not tear people down that are volunteering their time to this great city. And so it's my wish to everybody that we continue to move forward and make things great for this city. Next is item four, staff reports. Police Department interim chief David Donaldson.
Mayor, council. We're conducting three background investigations on three applicants. Don't know where it's gonna take us. Working on that. Also, too, I made a call out to Central Square and got a, we're on the way to get a update, if you will. We're no further than what we were, I don't feel, a year ago, but I'll follow up on that with you.
Thank you. All right, item number five, committee reports. Parks and Pools. Use the mic, please. David, can you give her a hot mic? Thank you.
Okay, we did have a meeting here last night in the rain. We always review all the parks. They were all in pretty good shape, except there are some large ant beds at Depot by the gazebo, and the book box is overflowing at Triangle Park. We were supposed to get another third box, either new or repaired, and that never happened, but we could use one because that box is totally overflowing and it's very out in the open there, so apparently people are using it. We had a prelong discussion about the Christmas decorations. We, which Diana Cronister chairs, and we appreciate that every year. It's a lot of hard work. We refreshed bows and paint and glitter. The new light bulbs were purchased, a hundred-foot new strands of garland. Our garland was getting very old and hard to work with. We want to thank the city council for approving thousand dollars for some of our purchases, and the Civic Club just approved five hundred dollars to purchase some additional decorations and lights for the bridge. Prices have really gotten expensive on these, so we could use the extra money. The lift was gotten yesterday, and Jorge and Odie finished getting the tree up and the top of the tree, which we need the lift for that, and he did finish, they did finish today, all the bows at the front island on those tall poles there. So that is all done, and tomorrow morning, Diana Cronister's gonna be at the, there by the clubhouse at nine o'clock, and so anybody like to come and help? We gotta start finishing the, all the rest of the decorations, which include the clubhouse, the tree, the bridge, thank you, the bridge, so there's still a lot of work to be done. And we didn't have too much help today, but it was a pretty cold day, so we hope maybe we'll get some more volunteers. Anybody on the island can come out and help, and we really would appreciate it. Let's see, we did discuss, so we've been trying to work on this for a couple of years. We desperately need a new electronic gate entry system at the pool for better security and for keeping people out that don't belong in the pool. There was a bid that was done that we don't know the vendor, and apparently it was a bid that actually Brent had, and apparently can't be located, so we have two new references for some bids. We will contact those. They were highly recommended, so we are still working on that. And we discussed a project for, the birdhouses at Triangle, if anybody's ever noticed, they're really getting old, they're worn out and kind of falling apart, so we're gonna come up with a project after first of the year that might involve parents and kids and involve them where they can work, work on those boxes, paint them or whatever. It'd be kind of a fun thing to do, which we're gonna do for the spring. I think that was it. Thanks a lot.
Hey, I just wanted to say thank you to you guys for everything you do, because the city really does look amazing, and especially at Christmas. I love coming over the bridge and seeing all of that.
Diane Cronister's the one that has worked for this for fifteen years. It's a lot of hard work. Twenty-five. I only had fifteen down.
Don't date it.
You guys do a great job. It looks amazing.
You just, you just would not believe what goes into this unless you do it, and in the past years, she had to be up there on a ladder, so we thank the city for really getting us the lift last year and for this year, because it was just too unsafe to be up there on those ladders, so.
Thank you, Chris. All right, roads and drainage?
We are a little bit hampered, because we don't have a building official, we don't have a city administrator, so we now are, I am, maybe a little bit closer. Okay. Anyway, we're a little bit hampered, because we don't have the city employees that we normally do. What we are doing is we are rolling up our sleeves and doing a lot of the R F Ps ourselves as a committee, and we are hopeful that we should get the narcissus done by this year, still possible, right? At least the drainage and the cross culverts, and then the full depth reclamation of the road may be delayed until next year, but hopefully before hurricane season. Other than that, we are working on getting the whole of Clear Lake Road to concrete or cement, whatever you call it, the entire length of it, including the approaches, which should help us tremendously because of traffic. Thanks.
Thank you, Thomas. All right, zoning board of adjustments and probably planning and zoning.
Mayor and council, no report for either one of those committees.
Thank you, Mr. Machowski. And waterfront compliance? Having none. Ed?
Yeah, we don't have a complaint.
All right, thank you, Ed. All right, item number six, civic club activities report. George out here? No. All right, item number seven, C L S sixtieth anniversary celebration committee. Anybody run a report? All right, and item eight, economic development corporation?
Well, our previous city administrator was also hired to do part of the, well, properly called bird dogging for the E D C. We are still, we are now compiling our list of priorities of what we do and expenditures. The most important ones are the boat ramp, where we are putting forth the money, and then we're claiming it back from Parks and Wildlife, and then the demolition of the body shop and the paving of the two parking lots.
Thanks, Thomas. All right, item number nine, with our corrections, public comments. At this time, any person with city-related business may speak to city council. If the topic of discussion is related to an item on the agenda, the comments may be made now or at the time of the agenda item is discussed. If the topic of discussion is not related to an item on the agenda, the city council cannot deliberate or take any action at this time. Comments from the public should be limited to a maximum of three minutes per individual.
My name is Samantha Fisher, and I live at five-one-five West Shore. I'm able to speak my mind publicly because of the First Amendment and the Constitution of the United States of America. I'm given the time and place of our city, because of our city's code of ordinances. Section two point two-five, council rules and procedures, section F, citizens' right to be heard. If you read through this section, it gives me the right to talk about items that are and are not on the agenda. I feel that this is a great platform for our citizens to get up and speak. We speak to each one of the council members at a time, so they can all hear us. I get to speak to all of the, all of the people of Clear Lake Shores, and I think it's an important platform, and I would hate to see it go. I would like to see it stay. Thank you.
You have to hold the button down till it turns green, or we can just change the mic Audio professional.
Thank you.
David, you might have to take, turn yours off in case it's on the same frequency, please.
Linda Machowski, ten nineteen North Shore Drive, thirty-four-year resident. We've been clear Lake Shores officials who were put into trusted positions to enforce the National Flood Insurance Program rule requirement. We have been whistleblowers for eighteen years about negligence, fraud, extortion, retaliation, false elevation certificates, false FEMA list to beat residents out of property. All of these negligent officials have failed greatly in protecting our city's flood insurance. Some officials have defrauded the insurance program, and they brag, "We are making money on hurricanes." Everything that has happened to us over the years has been a direct retaliatory because of our trying to protect the city's flood insurance for all of us, from the corrupt shenanigans of officials who knew better but cheat anyway. We have been retaliated against horrifically because of our honesty and in building conflict with FEMA NF I P rules. Three FEMA region, six experts, Lonnie Ward, Diana Herrera, and Mike Loomis have been in our homes lowest level. Mike Loomis, number three flood plane manager in the United States, has called out Clear Lake Shores officials and what they have done to us as pure retaliation and harassment. Now we have a possible flood insurance doomsday approaching, one of which we have warned these corrupt officials about for years, eighteen years. It has been confirmed by building official Kevin Harrell that Mayor Otten has built a non-conforming, non-city permitted, illegal, non-FEMA approved, below base flood elevation toilet at his home. It is not grandfathered. It was built after two thousand and fourteen. As in the past, lawbreakers do not enforce the law. Mayor Otten is a shining example of a mayor flaunting FEMA requirements and jeopardizing all of our city's flood insurance. He has failed us all. His wife Teresa has filed a slanderous police report, using Brett Cooley to write this up for her, falsely accusing me of trespass. This is very telling and more retaliation of lies and slander, because my husband and I continue to expose corruption in Clear Lake Shores by officials defrauding the National Flood Insurance Program. You should resign, Kurt Otten. You have clearly put your pocketbook and convenience over the protection of the city's flood insurance. We may now lose it because of your hypocritical negligence. Olson and Olson has stated, "Don't talk to the Machowskys," as the city attorneys have covered up for officials fraud for years. Lawbreaking, lying, perjury committing officials should not prevail. They have done everything to keep us quiet about their fraud of the National Flood Insurance Program, which will now hurt everyone in Clear Lake Shores if we lose all of our insurance. For the record, Ted Guthrie, I did not build an unlawful structure, but Mayor Otten has, along with many others. Thank you.
I'm, live at one oh three Clear Lake Road, Thea King. I love our community. I love our residents, and I couldn't sit back this time and not say anything. I have not, it wasn't from social media, it wasn't from talking to people on the island, it's what I seen at the meeting with Officer Zanco. I just couldn't stand by anymore. It was ridiculous. I can't see how you, mayor, can sit right there behind that desk tonight, how you morally think it's okay that after you had been told, and, I'm sorry, guys, I'm not a good speaker, how can it morally think that you should still be our mayor after not taking any action when Officer Zanco's sexual harassment was brought to you by Chief Donaldson or Assistant Chief Donaldson at the time? When the council member spoke up and asked you if it was true that he, Chief Donaldson had brought you that information, you said, "I don't recall." Then a second later, your memory magically appears and you say that you had taken it to the chief kill. I lost all trust and respect with you that night, and you blatantly lied to us all. In my opinion, when Chief Kill resigned, the city administrator was fired, mayor, you should have followed suit.
My name is Remi Lade. I live at three-twenty-four Blue Point. I'm up here, just like Lady said, I can't sit down and not get up and say something about the last three or four city council meetings we had. People, we come in here to crucify people. We're better than that. We are a hundred percent better than that. There are some good people on this island. That's one of the reasons we moved here. Everybody in this building today, I would give the shirt off my back for. The mayor's not getting paid to do anything he does. He's giving his time. His wife is suffering because she has to put up with all the slander he gets, and that goes for everybody on this council. Y'all need to look at yourselves. Everybody live in a glass house.
My name is Jesse Young. I live at nine-twenty Grove. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm glad I get to go after Remi. That was pretty powerful. You know, my purpose tonight is to not question the integrity or the authenticity of any person's grievance or whatever claim they may or may not have, but rather question, where's the love? Where is it? Where's the love, everybody? Seriously. Our public servants, elected or otherwise, hired, all of them pour their heart and soul into this city, and I sit up here, I'm on the E D C, I come to almost every city council meeting. Where are y'all? I don't see you, right? But I see all these individuals right here giving everything they have to this city. And y'all sit up here, you make up false truths, you make claims that aren't true, you don't ask the real questions that you should be asking about Officer Zanco, around other things with officers. I tell you what, I've heard things about the officers, I don't know if any of it's true, but I've heard some things that, quite honestly, it's despicable. It really is. So, many of you may know my name. I just introduced myself, but I intend to correct what you may not know about me. I've been through a lot in my life, and if it wasn't for my wife standing by my side and believing in me and pushing forward with me, believing that I could be a good person, even when I wasn't a good person, nobody in this room knew me before this night or even before I moved here. The only person that knows me in this damn town is my wife. She knew who I was before, but she showed me love, unconditionally. You know, I had this whole speech written out, and I kind of went off task. We're all guilty of something. Remi said it. We live in a glass house, and all the others throwing stones, including some people on council, including some people that are hired. Some people aren't here anymore, you know? I believe that there's goodness in everyone. I do. I firmly believe that. That's who I am. I believe that deep down, someone's good, no matter how bad the outside world sees them. I actually believe that. That's who I am. Before I finish out, I know I'm probably running out of time. I didn't find God until I got older. And lost my brother. My brother was a seventeen-year war veteran, and unfortunately, P T S D got the better of him, so I'm sorry if I get emotional over it. "If I speak in tongues of men and angels, but have not love, I am noisy, I am a noisy young or a clanging simple. If I have the gift of prophecy and can fathom all mysteries and knowledge, all I have, and if all I have is faith, so as to move mountains, but have not love, I'm nothing. If I gave away all that I have..." "And if I deliver my body to be burnt, but have not love, I gain nothing." One more. "Love is patient, love is kind, it does not envy, it does not boast." A lot of you know that. A lot of y'all know that line. "It's not proud, it doesn't seek to dishonor others, it's not self-seeking, it's not easily anchored, it keeps no record of wrongs." Remember that. Love doesn't keep any records of wrongs. "Love does not delight in evil, but rejoices with the truth. It always protects, always trusts, always hopes, and always perseveres." Thank you.
We also have Don Johnson here tonight with the subsidence district. He was just gonna talk for a quick bit, two minutes.
Just a very quick, yes. My name's Don Johnson, and I am a representative for all the cities in Galveston County at the Harris-Galveston Subsidence District.
Can you talk a little bit louder into the mics, so everybody can hear you?
Sure. Let me try it again. I am a representative for all the cities in Galveston County at the Harris-Galveston Subsidence District. I just came by tonight to drop off a handout to y'all. It's something that I worked with staff, really, I came up with a lot of the content, and staff made it, you know, look pleasant, and it answers most of the questions that I get about the subsidence district. But I wanted to let y'all know that this is, if y'all want a full-blown presentation at any time from us, we'd be glad to come down and tell you the whole story about subsidence and where it came from and what we're doing about it. Anyway, I just wanted to make that brief announcement to y'all, and don't want to take up too much time. If you have any questions, feel free to give me a call at any time. Thank you.
We appreciate your time and looking, looking out for our little town of Clear Lake Shores out of all the rest of the bigger towns, so appreciate you keeping us...
that we have to reach isn't my favorite decision, but it's what's in the best interest and what everybody else wants, not mine. So that said, I also wanna say I appreciate your willingness to serve, as I know it's difficult for us to find people who are willing to run for council and mayor positions. So I also recognize that those of us sitting here who aren't always here all the time, I'm trying to be here more often to pay closer attention to what's going on, so that I can help contribute and make council's job hopefully easier if they know what we want. I hope that we'll all do that, but when we disagree, that doesn't mean that we don't love thy neighbor, that simply means that we're looking out for our community's best interests as well, and we have a right to express to our councilmen who represent us what we want. So please don't misunderstand me that I don't share the love, I love this island, I've been here for thirty years. How many of you have been here for thirty or more years? Thank you, we're here for a reason. The rest of you who are newer, that's great, and we're so glad you love this island, but remember, just because we're old timers, we love this island too. And sometimes we speak up a little bit more because we've seen people come and go, we've seen councils. When I moved here thirty years ago, they were yelling foul language to each other, and I thought, "Not where I wanna live." But anyhow, um, I wanna know, one, who did, who does the background checks on the, um, applicants for chief? Because, uh, I am understanding that the chief that left us had a background in Dickinson of sexual harassment, and it should have been noted. So I wanna make sure that whoever's doing the background checks does it appropriately, and doesn't allow another problem person serving our island. Number two, um, if we have a lack of confidence in people, then they need to go. Not because we don't like the person, not because I hate you and I don't love thy neighbor, but we have to have confidence in our council. And we're all adults, we can respect each other and have different views and different opinions, and I don't think that that means that I don't love thy neighbor. I also wanted to thank, and I appreciate when I was thanking council, Diana Cronister works tirelessly to get our island looking so festive for the holidays, and while some of you may think, "Oh, that's just decorating and, you know, fluffing up garland," um, I learned yesterday, when I fluffed garland, how, I won't say the adjective, long it took to fluff one bag of garland. And if you think, I was wearing garden gloves to do it. So that is a, an amazing effort and time that it takes to get the entrance to our island looking beautiful. And I don't know all that help, all who helped Diana, but I know that she's worked tirelessly over the years, and I know that you've been here as long as I have, if not more, almost as long. I, I know I've been here longer because I knew Randy before y'all were married, so, so I could tell you some stories, girl. Yeah. Anyway, we'll go there. But, uh, also, so I really appreciate all your work, and the Thanksgiving, folks, I ran that years ago when I was, uh, Civic Club President, and appreciate so much all that everyone puts into our Thanksgiving dinner. Um, I don't know if everybody knows that the EDC's discussing spending two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred thousand plus to pave the parking lot next to the new brewery that's coming in, but I think that we've been talking about roads for years, we've been talking about a pathway for pedestrians over the bridge for years, for safety reasons. I think there are many more things that we need to spend our money on than to cover the dirt parking lot that was already, uh, a hundred, hundred thousand or two-hundred thousand, I don't know how much spent, on gravel for, for that parking lot. So we not only need to come to city council, but we ought to pay attention to EDC. And when you have people that offer to help serve on a committee, instead of hanging around with the same group because you get along with them or whatever, I think maybe we should, uh, start accepting some of us who have said, "I'll serve on that committee, I, I only know about myself, uh, but, uh, if we're not gonna serve, at least attend the EDC meetings," because I personally don't see us needing to spend two-hundred thousand plus on the parking lot out there, when we need a rainy day fund, or a pedestrian pathway that we've talked about for twenty years, and other roads fixed. Last thing, um, and I appreciate the time, um, was I wrong on that? Two-hundred thousand plus?
We need to start wrapping it up, please.
Correct me. Okay. And that is probably about it, and thank you again, I really appreciate the time.
Anybody else for public comments? Having none, we'll move to item ten, scheduled visitors, comments for each scheduled visitor shall be limited to five minutes per individual. First is, uh, Patrick Machowski with the recent FEMA Community Assistant Visit.
Good evening, uh, Patrick Machowski, 1019 North Shore Drive. Good evening, mayor and council. I asked for a copy of the recent Cav and any and all related correspondence on October tenth, twenty twenty-two. I received the information that you have before you from Jason on November fourth, twenty twenty-two. This is very limited information, and is obviously not everything. Let me get started by covering what a Cav is and how it relates to FEMA and the National Flood Insurance Program. Cav is an abbreviation for Community Assistance Visit performed by FEMA. These are basically audits and are done to ensure that the city is managing development properly in the floodplain, as agreed to it when it joined the National Flood Insurance Program, also known as the NFIP. FEMA oversees the NFIP who backs the flood insurance policies. Yes, I know there are fifty different commercial agencies such as Wright Flood Insurance that we got our flood insurance through, but all these are backed by the federal government through NFIP. We are not automatically eligible for flood insurance. The community, city here, has to request to join and abide by the rules and regulations stipulated by FEMA in order to maintain availability of flood insurance for our community. If the city does not abide by the rules, FEMA's only recourse is to remove the city from the program, which in essence cancels our flood insurance availability. With no flood insurance, you can't get a mortgage and a floodplain. If you have a mortgage, they will demand payoff immediately, with little chance to ever sell your home for the value in the future. Even if policies get reissued, they will be at a much higher rate. That brings us to the recent Cav, which was performed on July sixteenth, two thousand nineteen. It appears that this Cav has been lingering now for three years. In April of twenty twenty-one, two years after the Cav, FEMA Specialist Lauren Fulton emailed Kevin Harrell stating, "I got a fire lit under me this morning to show some movement on this Cav." This is, this, in this email, she lists twenty-six out of forty-six addresses that still needed information to resolve, two years after. In December of twenty-one, she emailed again stating, "I believe we are at a point in this Cav that we should stop focusing on individual sites and permitting documentation, and acknowledge that Clear Lake Shores has some programmatic deficiencies, and addr, address those deficiencies." Then in April of twenty-two, nearly three years after the initial Cav, Charles Cook, FEMA Flood Plane Management and Insurance Branch Chief, wrote a letter to you, Mayor Otten, giving clear deadlines of May seventh, twenty twenty-two, and July seventh, twenty twenty-two, for the city to complete the work to address programmatic deficiencies and successfully close the Cav, maintaining availability of the NFIP policies. In conclusion, because I have not received all the documents, reports, and emails, I'm not sure where the city is with this Cav, but it appears that we are in deep trouble if the requirements stated in the letter have not been met. I have no confidence in you, Mayor Otten, to oversee this process, as you have personally violated the city floodplain ordinance by installing a non-conforming toilet below the baseball flood elevation at your home. I am aware of four different Cavs that Clear Lake Shores has had, nineteen ninety-eight, two thousand five, two thousand thirteen, and now in two thousand nineteen. In the previous ones, they were answered within months, if not sooner. In each one of these Cavs in the past, our home at ten nineteen has never been on one, reported by FEMA. It was added by one of the previous mayors, uh, when questioned by a false address given by FEMA. My questions are for Mayor Otten and the council, have the requirements of May seventh and July seventh been met? If so, have they been, been presented to city council? You have in front of you the stipulations that had to be done, there were three of them. Who's in charge of responding to FEMA now that we have no building official and no city administrator? Do you realize that everyone in the city, businesses and homes alike, could lose their avail, availability to flood insurance? There are five-hundred-and-thirty policies at stake with over a hundred-and-thirty-eight million dollars in coverage. Thank you, if you have questions or comments. Sure.
Um, so yes, I did receive this letter on April fifth, no, I didn't receive it, sorry. It's dated April fifth, I did not receive it till April twenty-first, the city secretary checked it in from the mail. Upon receiving this, I gave it to our city official, building official, and asked about it, and they, he responded that he was working on the process. He, there's email on it, uh, that he, um, asked for, uh, a delay to submit the thing because we couldn't meet the dates of May seventh and July seventh to turn in the requested information. They extended that, uh, I believe, August seventh. Uh, Mr. Harrell is still retained by the city right now, and I have written, uh, wrote, written Mrs. Fulton, and unfortunately, her computer's down, but, um, Kevin has talked to her, and they are working with all of our files that they, that the city has submitted to them, to answer to all the items that they requested.
So I was not given that email, even though I asked for it.
I...
I was only given the two emails that I have from Lauren Fulton...
Right, and I...
Uh, in my request.
So I don't know anything about that, because I know they're working with IT trying to get the emails to come out, so...
Right, well, so three years after the audit, we still are out lingering, hoping that we're gonna keep our flood insurance, because that is their only recourse.
And you're absolutely right, and my attention has been on this all since I've received this.
Sir, I have no confidence. And the, the last ones, in ninety-eight, uh, I think it was Ted Guthrie responded within a couple months, Catherine McIntyre responded within a month, and Vern Johnson responded within a month. Here we are, three years out, seventy-five percent of your time in office, this Cav has been out there lingering.
This, this was not presented until April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
The Cav was sent to you, sir, the Cav happened, if you look at this email, or, excuse me, the letter, the Cav happened on July sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, they get addressed to the mayor. Every one of the last ones have been addressed to the mayor. You're saying you've never received that?
I have never received it, so...
Well, I can't, I have a hard time understanding how you could have not gotten it, but I guess maybe in the, the office, but still, three years, sir? Three years sitting out there? There's a hundred-and-thirty-eight million dollars worth of coverage. Our, our value, if we lose flood insurance, I think Alex Scanlon told me that he didn't renew his policy, and he's way high in the air. His policy went up five times the cost, even if you get it back. So, thank you.
So, you know, I add to that, you know, I even looked into El Lago, which they had received a CRS rating, which is above and beyond, and they went to a third party. So I approached both Brent Spear and Mr. Kevin Harrell about doing the CRS rating, and that's when I was made aware, the same time I received this, that we did not have a CRS rating anymore. And that's when I put them on this, and they were calling, and this letter actually came in after I acquired about the CRS rating. So, that's where we're at with that, and we're trying to get the CRS rating, which is even better and beyond what we're asking for here.
Well, I'm requesting from FEMA a copy of that Cav, and I've requested from the city. So this is what you have in front of you, two emails, and this report, um, from, uh, Charles Cook is all I've received from the city as far as communications, and that came from Jason, who's no longer with us.
You're, you're absolutely right, and this is the first I've seen your two emails, so thank you. Any other comments from council or questions? All right, uh, moving to the next one on item ten, Trish Scarborough, lack of confidence in the mayor.
Hi, I'm Trish Scarborough at six fifteen Oak. Um, I'm sorry? Oh, I didn't even say, I've heard I don't even need a megaphone for ever, no. Um, you know, I tell you what, mayor, you threw me for a loop here, and, uh, in a, in a, in a great way. Um, I first wanna say that there is absolutely nothing that I have ever had to say, or said, or will say tonight, that has anything to do with hate. You talk about coming across this bridge and not feeling hate, I don't think any of us have a better feeling than we have when we come across that bridge and know we're coming home, and feeling like we're coming home to vacation. When we say, "Where's the love?", I don't think I've ever seen Nancy Schwartz, who got up here and spoke, she helped me in a time where during COVID, it's a long story, a lot of you know it, but for many months, we cared for a little Chinese baby whose parents couldn't get in this country, and she went above and beyond, and everybody that was on the marquee, that is love. So I don't think there's any issue here of, of love, lack of love, or too much hate. I'm so sorry to hear anything about your wife, I don't know your wife, I don't know you, um, and nor do I use my platform on Facebook to slander anybody or speak about any of these situations. Um, I'm actually really glad right now, this issue, a lot of people, you've heard about this letter that everybody's talking about, uh, City Apology, that was written to me, and I'm just, it's, it is confusing, and, and mayor's absolutely right about the, the changes and why they needed to be made. But, I, so I am glad that you shut me down in that meeting, but we're talking about an agenda, um, that the Texas Code, or the, the Texas Open Meetings Act versus our local code, city code, that now thankfully has been changed, because I, I had to write, you know, I thought long and hard about writing that letter, and I thought, you know, this is not about me, this is about everybody, everybody's rights, and had maybe I not written a letter to the city, saying the city was under potential, you know, tremendous liability... we cared for a little Chinese baby whose parents couldn't get in this country. And she went above and beyond and everybody that was on the marquee, that is love. So, I don't think there's any issue here of, of love, lack of love, or too much hate. I'm so sorry to hear anything about your wife. I don't know your wife, I don't know you. Um, and nor do I use my platform on Facebook to slander anybody or speak about any of these situations. Um, I'm actually really glad right now, this issue, a lot of people, you've heard about this letter that everybody's talking about, the city apology. That was written to me. And I'm just, it's, it is confusing. And, and Mayor's absolutely right about the, the changes and why they needed to be made. But, uh, so I am glad that you shut me down in that meeting. But we're talking about an agenda, um, that the Texas code or the, the Texas Open Meetings Act versus our local code, city code, that now thankfully has been changed. Because I, I had to write, you know, I thought long and hard about writing that letter and I thought, you know, this is not about me, this is about everybody, everybody's rights. And had maybe I not written a letter to the city saying the city was under potential, you know, tremendous liability because violations, you know, there was a, it was clear in the city code that we could speak, maybe not, and this is not, again, not about me. When I realized this is about everybody else, I knew I needed to say something. So, thankfully I did because it allows people like you now to come in here. I forgot your name, I'm sorry. Don Johnson, Miami Vice. So, it's really nice now to, to know that people like Don Johnson can come in here. You're not on the agenda and you are welcome and free to speak. So, I love that. I mean, I hate that it came to that, but look at the good that came out of it. Um, I would question though, this has gone on for a year and a half. Um, you know, to ask for that change, what was the reason to ask for that change? Are we try, were we trying to shut people up in here? Maybe that's why, you know, you ask why people aren't here? Because nobody ever thought they could get up and speak? So, that might be a reason people aren't here. But anyway, you kind of threw me for a loop and I'm going to get it all over the board. Now, uh, the unfun part of this is I really want to, um, remind everybody that we had a very serious allegation that brought about by Officer Zanko. And I don't want to hear anything about anybody's reputation or what they do. That's not what this is about. Officer Zanko brought about a very serious allegation. She brought it apparently to, from what I understand, Chief Donaldson. I've been reviewing the minutes of that meeting and, uh, where the officers came and that sexual, the, uh, allegation was brought about and was brought to your attention that ultimately resulted in the city administrator being fired, um, David Donaldson being reinstated as interim chief, and thank you for that. Um, and the chief ultimately resigning. I have to believe that he resigned knowing that as a paid city official, um, his termination, the termination of his position was imminent. Um, so I have to, I have to wonder about that. But my concern here is, and again, about city liability. Um, you know, we all have to take culpability and responsibility and accountability for our actions. And that night in the meeting, you were asked, and it took a couple of people hitting you up for this, Councilman Cronister. Card, is that true? Did he come speaking about Don, David Donaldson to you without? Mayor Otten, I don't recall. He did, I'm sorry. I took it to TK and told him to handle it per procedure. David Donaldson, do you remember me coming to you, sir? Mayor Otten, huh? David Donaldson, do you remember me coming to you, bringing this to your attention? Mayor Otten, yes. Let's face it, we talk about lies, hate lies coming across that bridge. This pretty much was a straight-up lie and lack of accountability for any action on your end. You're sitting here now with your job and, uh, and, and again, I am very grateful for every single person, everything you guys do. I know it is tireless. But you're sitting here in your position, um, this, and council took swift and immediate action. I have to wonder what would have happened had you been a paid city employee in that situation. You clearly admitted that you were aware of the situation. Now we have officers that, or our city is now left at open to potential liability, huge liability. And that, that is a concern. Um, you know, you mentioned, uh, somebody, I think that was you, talking about, you know, we're, we're, or somebody mentioned about, we're living, you know, we feel safe living in our houses. I'll tell you why we feel safe living in our houses. Because this man right here is back in and all of these officers, I don't care what their reputations are, who they are, whatever, I don't care. There is not an officer out there that would not take a bullet for every single person in this room and everyone on this island. So, I think they deserve our respect and they deserve to know that they are respected by their highest leader in command. And apparently there was a massive breakdown there. And I see a lot of people who've lost jobs, but they were elected city officials. You unfortunately, not unfortunately, but you not being a, a city official and city council having no ability to remove you from your position. Um, it really comes down to us as citizens to go, what is our, where is our, um, you know, our, how, how liable are we, you know, in this position? Uh, as a city right now with the mayor who, who basically you admit, admittedly lied in that situation. He lied, he lied to all of us, not to everybody in this room, but basically the citizens. You know, and I hate bringing up hate, this is, but this is nothing about hate. But I am going to bring up lies because you talked about lies coming across that bridge. That was a straight-up lie. Um, so that, that is obviously a concern and, you know, I'm not even really sure where else I want to go with all of this because now you kind of threw me and, uh, but I do want you to know that on, in no way in social media, I do appreciate your statement before we got up here, but in no way in social media have I ever tried to hurt, slander. I, I generally stay out of this stuff. So, it's only been as of late that I posted facts and that's it. So, and ask for people to listen and if they support, great. If not, get up and speak your mind. And we've had a lot of people on both sides of the fence and I'd speak their mind. I love that. I think what you've done, what we've done now, it might have been because, maybe because I wrote that letter, potential lawsuit, that now people are going to feel free and that, yeah, it might clog up your meetings, but people are going to feel free to get up here and speak. That could have gone on indefinitely had that not been brought to the attention of the city count, of the city attorney. That's, that would be another thing I'd have to consider because that was a pretty big mistake on his end. Now, um, but at the, at the same time, I cannot, and I, I don't think any of us are going to forget what went down on October third in that meeting and Officer Zanko. And yes, I know I sound repetitive. It was a lie. We have a man here who lost his job, who clearly tried, was the one person trying to protect his officer. And I don't know how, I wouldn't call it a cover-up. I don't know how all that was overlooked or he ended up without a job, but you do. And Chief, former Chief Killes gone. Brent Spears is gone, you're still sitting there. And again, no disrespect, but I have a feeling the way council handled that, you wouldn't be had you been a paid city employee. Um, I would really, and briefly to talk about love. You know, until four weeks ago, you've never really even seen me get up here, till October third.
I'm sorry, Trish, but your time is really up.
Of course it is.
It's been way over five minutes.
Yeah.
I've been more than courteous.
Well, you've let everybody else talk longer than their time, too.
You're almost going on eight or nine minutes.
It's how many?
Almost eight or nine minutes.
Wow, well, anyway, so I guess if that's the case, then just very bluntly put, we are a city that is, we are better than what, we are only as good as the leaders who lead us. And we right now are being led in a false direction with lies. And I would ask you to uphold the oath that you swore to take to do, act in the best interest of this community and act with integrity and resign from your position.
All right, item number eleven, new business consent agenda. Item A, or any items need to be pulled by council from consent agenda of A or B?
Just got a couple of questions on that real quick. Um, just looking through the, uh, check register here. I was just, uh, curious, what's the, I'm sorry, just looking through the, uh, check register here.
You have to pull the item if you're not going to accept the consent agenda, please.
I don't necessarily want to pull that, I'm just trying to figure out what it is.
Oh.
Um, just the, uh, OmniBay Services? It was, uh, a check that was written for five hundred and forty-six dollars. And, uh, it just said for OmniBay Services for, uh, Omni Fees payable?
That's our warrant system.
Okay.
We pay a portion of fines that are collected, uh, that are in warrant. A portion of that goes to OmniBay.
Okay. I was just curious, I hadn't seen it on there before, so, thank you.
We pay it quarterly, so you may not have noticed it prior because it's not a monthly payment, so...
All right, no items pulled, so, uh, any objection to accepting consent agenda from council? Having none, consent agenda is accepted. Item twelve, council business, discussion, possible action may be taken on the following items. Item A, remove and approve employee, remove, review and approve employee health benefit rates in calendar year twenty twenty-three. And Mr. Pons, are you ready to, you want to talk about it a little bit? No, no, that's what, I thought you were. Okay. Want to use the mic real quick?
Uh, my name is Michael Pons.
Hello?
Yeah. So, we're looking at the renewal of the Blue Cross Blue Shield and Guardian benefits. Uh, the Blue Cross went up three point six percent, which is pretty much in line with the trend. It's been about eight percent. I'm sorry? How's that? So, the Blue Cross Health Insurance went up three point six percent. The trend in the industry has been eight percent, so we're actually coming in a little better. Um, the, let me look at my notes. Okay, due to, um, changes with Obamacare, the insurance companies have been able to raise the out-of-pocket maximum. So, you'll see that on there, that it went up two hundred and fifty dollars. And they can do that because of changes with Obamacare. All the insurance companies been doing that. So, what it boils down to is you're not going to see the same plan you had last year this year. It'll have the same number, but it won't have the same benefits. And I got twenty pages comparisons that we looked at and there's nothing out there any better. Uh, the Guardian, there's still a, ancillary benefits went up three percent. And that's kind of in line with inflation. So, I'm recommending we stick with those two. If anybody would like to look at the comparison, I've got twenty pages here. There's a lot to look at, so we didn't include it in the package. And that's all I had to say. Any questions?
And then what else is in the, uh, packet is the rate comparisons for both Blue Cross Blue Shield and then the, uh, the other package.
Correct.
For the additional.
Right. We looked at all the different companies that offer health insurers, Aetna, et cetera, compared to what we have, and nothing looks better. And it, nothing has for the last ten years, to be honest with you. Blue Cross has been very, very competitive in small groups.
And that's what we built in, uh, five percent into the budget increases for the fiscal year.
Correct. That was an estimate for the budget purposes.
Yep.
So, we came in less than what we had just built, built in.
Thank you, Mr. Pons.
Okay.
Anybody have questions or make a motion and have any questions for Mr. Pons?
As I said, it was, we budgeted five percent, came in at three point six, so I think that's pretty good. So, to it, I'll make a motion then there, we, uh, approve the health, uh, benefit employee rates for the calendar year of twenty twenty-three.
A second.
Motion by Mr. Fisher, second by Ms. LeDai. Any discussion? Having none, all in favor, aye? Any opposed, nay? Having none, the motion passes. Item B, review and approve, oh, thank you, Mr. Pons, appreciate it. Uh, review and approve a firm to search and provide interim city administrator applicants for city council to select an interim city administrator. Um, most of all, the information was in your packet. I have had several conversations with SGM, but still to today, they have not sent in any type of proposal. They kept on saying they'd get it to me, get it to me. They have someone that they said they could start, but still don't have anything. Other than that, we can, uh, get a motion so we can discuss.
I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, Texas First Group, um, to, uh, do the, uh, search, provide an interim, uh, city administrator, uh, for the city.
A second.
Motion by Mr. Fisher, second by Ms. LeDai. Any discussion for Texas First Group to be the search firm for the interim, uh, city administrator? Having none, all in favor, aye? Any opposed, nay? Having none, the motion passes. Item thirteen, adjournment at, uh, seven thirty-four.